Chris, let's go. He's ready.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. The Board of Alderman Special Meeting for Wednesday, July 15. I am going to be leading this meeting from home. I actually tested positive for COVID-19 this morning. I had a rapid test. And so I will be quarantining for the next 14 days. I have no symptoms. And so I think I'm probably perfect proof of what we're talking about today. When we say people are walking around that we tested positive, that has no idea. Which is just even more critical for us to be here in face covering and social distancing. So to start this meeting today, I would ask you to adopt the agenda for the meeting.
Salute.
Second.
Salute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll discuss quotes received for the repairs to the air conditioning at Oxford Conference Center, Hayden, if you can help us with that.
So we... So we have actually been out of AC for about a month now. We thought it was a little bit more minor of an issue, but we need to replace our AC controller. I've submitted three bids. The first one, Johnson Controls. The second is Upchurch Services, and the third is Train. I worked with our preferred vendor, Carl White, who works in our HVAC all the time. And he kind of helped me get these bids in place and walk me through them. He said we are definitely comparing apples to apples. We had to get one of these to kind of come in and revise to make sure we were looking at the same thing. All about the same ballpark. Johnson is $22,970. Upchurch is $23,500. And Train is $25,870. Really, my only kind of tidbit to add would be, I think having the local maintenance support from Train is definitely beneficial. I know they're the highest, but right now we have a KNC controller. And that it would be what Upchurch would be replacing. It's a little complex and probably the least user-friendly of the three, based on my conversations with Carl. But I'm definitely leading it up to y'all. We just... It's a little bit time-sensitive and just want to kind of get the ball rolling.
And which one did you say you prefer?
The benefit I see from Train would be the local support, that we wouldn't have to call in people from out of town. You know, we're paying per hour and obviously would have to include travel with the other two. That being said, they are a little bit higher, so...
And you have to make the determination that it's the best quote, or the lowest in bets.
And specific findings for reasons you don't pay the cost?
So Johnson Controls would definitely be the lowest. I hope that... I think it's... that would be fine. They, like I said, I think their system would be a little bit user-friendly than Upchurch, which is what we have right now, the KNC. Other than that, I don't have a great deal of knowledge.
How about the training that Carl did? What do you think about those?
I think that Train and Johnson are just... tend to be a little bit less complex, according to my research. But... and what we have, the KNC, it is... it's a little bit... It's intense, you know? It's not something that you can necessarily, if you have part-time people there or staff, just walk through very quickly. The other two, I think, will be just a little bit more minimal.
So you said there was some driving time? There's some... we're going to be paying an hour each way?
Well, just looking forward to, in the future, if we had issues and we had to call them in. Our local... our HVAC guy does not handle the controller side. Now, in my experience, we've not had a lot of issues. You know, this... we've just... the lifetime of our controllers just expired. It's the original. It's from when the building was built, I assume, in '03, '04.
So we don't... you don't have any type of... you don't have any numbers of how many times we've had somebody come out?
I don't.
Let's just say twice a year for, what, 20 years, that's 40 times. And if a trip charge is...
$100?
$100, then I don't know if... I don't know if you're getting the...
We're getting a better deal through Train because they're local and they don't get charged.
That's right. So in the life of the...
Hayden, have you had them out? Have you told them, oh, come out once a year, twice a year?
We have not had them come out until this issue, since I... since Hollis left. Just because we haven't had any issues.
Are we servicing...
The controller itself does not need like a... an annual service.
It's not a service.
Okay.
It's part of this contract.
Okay.
Correct.
But it deals with the ser... I mean, it would deal with the service in the long run. I mean, it wouldn't be the service of the actual unit, but if there is a problem, you're paying additional fees.
If there is one. But we really... we don't know that in a year or two years, we won't have somebody locally that can do it. We're fine. I'm good either way, whatever y'all say.
Yeah, I am too.
So I think it does need regular review, which... which one is the best bid?
Okay. I would recommend the Train. In our... in our experience, when we've had issues in the past, it's never in a timely fashion. You know, weekend, night. I think just having the local support would steer me to recommend the Train, good.
I'll make a motion if we accept the bid from Train being the lowest and the best bid because of their reputation for service and the fact that they're local.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is my fir... I'm sorry?
That's you.
Oh, that's my echo, okay. Sorry, this is my first experience in doing one of our meetings for Microsoft Teams. And so now I know what everyone's talking about when they say the sound is bad. So if y'all would all speak right into your microphones, I can hear Hayden perfectly.
We couldn't hear Janet.
Yeah, we couldn't hear Janet. And so if anybody could just barely hear you, to know what we use. So if you would, speak into your microphone. Thank y'all for that. I know that Hayden would be glad to have new air conditioning after all-time most frequent Sunday. The next thing on our agenda is to discuss data for Team and starting Oxford Safely Plan Phase Two. I'm going to go through some numbers quickly, as we always do, and then I'll ask Jimmy to give us an update as well. Actually, Jimmy, why don't you go ahead and get a startup?
Okay, you've all got a document, except for the ones that are coming in on video of our clinic data. Everything, you can see our totals on that. The new state data just dropped. And what we have for today is statewide, 1,025 new cases, 18 new deaths throughout the state. We went up to 536 local cases, which is an increase of nine new cases.
All right, thank you, Jimmy. And I was just tested, if you can't hear me well because I have my mask on. I am at home by myself, so I'm going to remove my mask. And I got a draw for the fiddle, so if you can't hear me, I'm going to take it off for that. But I want to go over, we had record highs of new cases over the past week. On Thursday of last week, we had 18 new cases with 62 active. On Friday, we had 27 new cases with 81 active. On Saturday, we had 33 new cases with 102 active. On Friday, we had nine new cases. We did not get an active case update from the state on Sunday. On Monday, we had 30 new cases with 96 active cases. And then Tuesday, 18 new cases with 91 active cases. I think the biggest thing to consider there is last Thursday, regardless of the numbers, we went up every day. Last Thursday, we were 62 active cases. By Saturday, 102. And yesterday, we had 91. Jimmy, I know you just got the numbers, and I'm guessing that we probably haven't received an active case list today?
That's correct. We have not received a list for today.
So we don't get... But we have a number from our clinic. Overall, our clinics have reported a total of 287 cases that are outside of Lafayette County, but those aren't all current cases. Jimmy, do we have any information on that number or active cases today?
From the clinics?
Yeah.
From the clinics, I had added it up earlier. It came to around 35, I believe, when I was doing it. I didn't write the number down on it, but within the past 14 days, active cases from the clinics, I believe, totaled up to around 35 cases.
Okay. And, you know, I'll say, we know that that number is much higher. My daughter was tested for COVID-19 because she had been around a friend who tested positive. She tested last Wednesday, and we still have not received her results. This morning, she and I both had the rapid test, and they both came back positive. I was only tested because I was there with her, and she tested positive, so I asked them to test me. And she has no symptoms. And so I guess my point is, she was tested eight days ago, and we still don't have results. And so I know there's people who are probably not quarantining because they feel fine. And it is so long right now, the labs are so backed up with the increased testing that, you know, people are not quarantining. I think there's a lot of the problems with that. Dr. Dobbs did tell me on Friday, and I spoke with him, that several of the large labs have been really backed up. And so we can expect large numbers all week if those tests catch up. I'm not sure if it's catching up very quickly, it may be extended. It's really, I think, is amazing that we still only have four deaths. If you compare our new and active cases in other counties with the number of deaths, you will see how really low it gets. Just to give you a few quick examples. And keep in mind, we have 536 cases. Adams County has 388 cases and 20 deaths. Pala County, 390 cases and 24 deaths. Oliver County, 428 cases and 810 deaths. Adams County, 608 cases and 42 deaths. LaFleur County, 569 cases and 56 deaths. You get the picture. Our death rate is very low, and for that, we are very blessed. I think that a lot of that goes back to the age group that tends to be contracting the virus. Our hospital numbers are remaining steady. I spoke with Bill Henning about an hour ago. They have risen over the past month from where they were in April and May, but they still aren't causing that to hospital any great concern. Bill Henning provides me with the numbers, and he says today that the hospital typically runs about 60% to 70% capacity, and that's where they are today. They have gone up in COVID-19 cases. They had been about 13% to 15% hanging at that number for a month or so. They are at 23 today of COVID cases. So he said they have been for the past few weeks hovering in the low 20s of numbers of COVID cases at the Memorial Hospital. He did say that most are not needing ICU, and there are very few on this. There's plenty of general capacity. He said that ICU capacity is getting fine, but the air is not turning anyone away at this point. I did ask him about the number of patients that are from Lafayette County, because previously he had stated that there are a... You know, as the number of hospitalizations has increased, it has not necessarily been from Lafayette County citizens. And that continues to be the case. He said that there are about 25% to 30% are from Lafayette County. And that is a typical percentage for the Memorial Hospital of Lafayette County patients is their regional healthcare facility. But, you know, this talks about our hospital capacity and our deaths are our most important data to track. And our hospital capacity is increasing, and so we certainly need to consider that if we make decisions today. I reached out to Dr. Dobbs last week, and I've shared this with the board, but I want to share it with the public, that I asked him for age data. The data, we had 102 positive or 102 active cases. I asked him to give us a breakdown of ages and things... sorry, I took my stammer. Of ages that were those case that were in that 102 active cases. And it shows that 72% of our cases between June 21st and July 4th were under the age of 39. 87% are below the age of 49. So that confirms our position really about hospital hospitalization rates and what remains low, because we are having more than... 50% of our cases fall in the 18 to 29-year-old range. And so that's, you know, that's why we're seeing a lower hospitalization rate. OCD has been doing some science tests in restaurants and bars over the past week. On Friday night, they reported that the bars were all at capacity, and that was at about 11 o'clock Saturday night. And then on Friday night, they reported that there was a large dinner crowd, but not a packed bar. We have received calls about people working that have received positive diagnoses. And we are taking those calls very seriously and passing them along to the State Department of Health. So we encourage you, if you have tested positive, to quarantine, or if you're waiting on tests to quarantine. We did my presentation yesterday to someone who refused to put on a mask and a blip mask. We desperately need your help with this. I know that, you know, I keep seeing posted on social media, different posts about the CDC says this, or the WHO says this. And, you know, there are posts from February. I realize that the data has changed, suggestions and recommendations have changed. Today, a false report, everyone says from the CDC, to the WHO, to the Department of Health, that masks make a difference. And so if you buy into the digital hoax theory, then 40% of our businesses without a mask on. That is certainly your prerogative, and we understand that there are people who think that, and that's okay. But we are going to be very strict about leaving businesses without a mask on. So that pretty much sums up the data that we have to provide. You know, our goal is to maximize community health while minimizing the damage that will come. We have said that since the beginning, and I think that we can continue to do that while still becoming more strict on our requirements. I think it's critical for us to within contact time and to reduce interactions without masks. And I think that we should address the cases where that is most... where that most often happens. You know, last week, we talked about closing restaurants and bars at 10 o'clock, and I reported leaving them open. At that time, we didn't have this age data from Dr. Dobbs, and we were not sure if it was just a fixed item number or if this is something that's going to become consistent. But it is evident now that this is going to become consistent. And so I would like to recommend that we consider going back to where we were in our last phase, taking one step back with our restaurants and bars. This would be a 10 o'clock time limit on selling alcohol, or if you prefer, if the bars could open restaurants to close them. You know, we've gotten a lot of feedback from people saying we have to close the bars. We have to understand that in Mississippi, bars and restaurants are the same. They all have the exact same license, so we can't differentiate between a bar and a restaurant. Whatever rule we make for one applies to all. So I need to put that in mind as we discuss what bars and restaurants should do. And also, I think a setback in restricting group gatherings is certainly needed, especially if we do... If you all do decide to limit alcohol sales or close businesses at a particular time. And you shouldn't have in front of you the Governor's Executive Order 1507. That is the order that he set out last week that is... it only applies to 13 counties who have seen a little bit surge. And he is going to expand that, and I would not be surprised if we are included in a later executive order if our numbers continue to do the same. But one thing that I see in his gatherings, and that is under Roman numeral two, letter C. He says, "Social gatherings shall be limited to a maximum of 10 participants indoor and a maximum of 20 participants outdoor."
So... No, you're saying that when you broke up.
Okay. That is Roman numeral two, letter C, gatherings. You see that? Do y'all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Says, "Social gatherings and activities shall be limited to a maximum of 10 participants indoor and 20 outdoors." And he goes on to say, "This limitation shall not apply to gatherings and facilities governed by other capacity limitations." So this is not applied to restaurants or to other facilities that we already have, outdoor recreational facilities, swimming pools. Things that have established capacity limitation would not be affected by this, but we would need to address those separately if you were okay with going with this plan. He also says there in "Undergathering," "Face Coverings" must be worn indoors and outdoors when unable to maintain a minimum of 6 feet of separation when attending public events. You know, I think if that is something else, he says, including outdoor book complexes. So, you know, those are things that are... we have not over for Lafayette County. But with no counting-wise mask requirement, I think that, you know, we may want to destrict her on our face covering. Or you... or not. Those are just the things that I would bring up for discussion. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to y'all to discuss.
Mayor, one addition is I did a quick count on our clinic data. In the non-residents, there's 34 active cases of non-residents out of our clinic data.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
So Mayor, what about the county? What kind of guidelines or restrictions do they have?
Well, everyone in the state is under the Governor's Executive Orders, but the county does not currently... As I understand it, I think they were going to discuss it again, but I've not heard that from anyone there. That they were going to discuss again implementing a face covering requirement. But at this point, my understanding is that they have not chosen to do that.
Okay, so when we're... if we want to limit the social gatherings to 10 indoors and 20 outdoors, once you step across the city limits line, then the houses and apartments and students there can still crowd in. What is it for the governors? Is it 20 indoors or 50?
If I'm not... if I'm not mistaken, his last executive order was the 50 and 100 outdoor, and I think it was 20 and 50 indoor. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay. Well, that's... at least that's something that we can... we can count.
That's right.
Okay. Well, I think that we know, and the research is there, that indoor gatherings of any kind are a prime spreader of this virus. So...
That's right.
I think starting with the 10 participants indoors and a maximum of 20 outdoors would be a good thing for us to implement. And I think those smaller numbers would make it easier for OPD to go into a home if necessary and count.
Right. Sorry, my desk computer's about to come. I wasn't planning on seeing anything during today. No, I agree. What does anyone else think? We can tackle group gatherings first.
That is true. And I agree with what Janet's just been saying.
What would that... Tell us what that all entails for the public to know.
Okay, it's, you know, we decided at one of our last meetings that we would do... We'd limit indoor gatherings to 10, if you could not socially, and 20 if you could. Right now, our outdoor gatherings still fall under the Governor's Executive Order that states 50 if you can't socially gather. states 50 if you can't socially gather, I mean socially distance, and 100 if you can. So this, in his latest order for those 13 counties, we have changed that to 10 if you're inside, 20 if you're outside. It doesn't have any, you know, there's no issue in social distance. 10 inside, 20 outside. Well, right now, we are currently at 10 or 20 inside, depending on if you can socially distance.
And that's just private residence, right?
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Right. It would be, but...
Not businesses or bars or restaurants or churches or anything.
Right. Yeah. That's what I want to get out to the public, is that it's not...
Right. That's exactly right. So all businesses, from lines to office spaces, to retail, to restaurants, everything that has outdoor recreational facilities, everything that has a capacity limit already stated would not affect it. These are for social gatherings.
Yeah. And we know of social gatherings that have been like a Petri dish for this virus, and we have, you know, documentation. So I'm going to make a motion that we change our gathering regulations to 10 participants indoors and a maximum of 20 outdoors for social gatherings and activities.
Seconded.
All right. That's a motion and a second to change our gatherings to 10 indoors and 20 outdoors. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? All right. We will make that change. And, you know, I would just encourage the community, we continue to get reports on neighborhood gatherings and group gatherings at all places and around swimming pools and parties, and, you know, that is where this is being transmitted. So I would encourage you to really, as we said it every time, we have a great plan on paper, but we've got to have it implemented to be able to cover this. So, and I'm pleased that wearing a mask certainly helps, that there are people that are asymptomatic that don't know it. So wear your face covering. All right? What else would you all like to discuss?
Mayor, I would like to...
Mayor, go ahead, John.
I'd like to say something about the bars at the 10 o'clock building. While all of the data shows that the young people are the ones contracting it, we don't really have data showing that it's the bars where they are contracting it. And they are a legitimate business with a license, just like what else? And I feel like we're penalizing them to do this. What, you know, I've spoken with Jeff, I'd like Jeff to come up and ask me, I don't think we've had, I think we've had very good compliance, and I don't think they're that crowded after 10 o'clock. If Jeff could speak.
So on the, on the bars, we're checking them. Our downtown district has seven day covers now with our reassignments. We're checking them every, every day, every shift, multiple times throughout the shifts, and we've written two citations. I pulled our July compliance check numbers before this meeting, and 15 days in, we're at 555 compliance checks, and I think we've written 11 citations, maybe 10. So overall, you're not seeing gross negligence. I mean, it's, I think the businesses are doing a pretty good job of honoring the ordinance.
And is it, is it, are the bars crowded after 10 o'clock?
We're seeing one or two nights max a week where you have a large crowd, past the dinner crowd. Last night, Monday night, nothing. So typically, you get a Friday night where the weather's nice and you have a large crowd. Outside of that, it's, it's pretty small.
And I think that we don't have proof that it is actually crowding in bars, but we do have proof that, you know, when it spreads most often, it's when people do not have a mask and where they have closer contacts, which is going to be when you're dining or having drinks at the bar. That's the only business where we allow you to be seated and your mask comes off. So, you know, I do think that it is critical for us to reduce contact time and to reduce interactions without masks. And we do know that that is the business category where that's happening most often.
And I wonder why the whole country is closing bars? Why are our bars any different? I mean, that's what all the experts are saying is, is one of the major places where it's spread. Whether people are complying or not, it's still an indoor space where the virus is spreading in every corner. People are laughing, they're talking, and that's great, and we would love for people to have fun, but every time that happens, that virus is spreading to other people. And I'm not saying we should close the bars, but I really think we need to take a step back and close at 10. Now, that doesn't mean that the bars, restaurants can't continue if they want to all night to do curbside food pickup or delivery. They can still do that, and of course, all the drive-throughs can be open. But I think that three hours from 10 to 1 would be a time when we could limit the spread of this virus.
And Mayor, this trailer, I agree with Jen's, they say we need to take a step back, and they be sure they're going to wait for a time, because we're trying to stop the spread.
And it's going to get worse, as the students start going back, there's going to be more and more people in the bars, and especially, you know, they usually come in at 10 o'clock. So it's not going to get better.
Right. This is Mark. I've been struggling with this one back and forth all week, all weekend. I don't think I would penalize the bars, closing them, but I could be talked into limiting alcohol sales after 10 o'clock. So there's still a restaurant, there's still a bar, so if we stopped alcohol sales at 10, that would still enable them to be able to drink for another hour and sell food, and maybe recoup some of that, and also keep employees on the payroll and not hurt the employees' income either. So I'm not, I'm not in for closing them at 10, but I could be talked into alcohol sales stopping at 10.
Now, Mark, you think we should still have, that those three hours have people come in and sit down and eat? I mean, I'm thinking that we're not accomplishing that much if we don't just close. They can still do food with curbside pickup. I mean, I don't think it's necessary that they have people come in and sit for dinner. Actually, most of the kitchens close at 10 for, you know, for sitting down. Pizza places continue to serve, but they could do take, people could do takeout.
I think we ought to give them the opportunity to make some income off the food, and it's, you know, one of the arguments has been, as people drink more, it's harder to keep them social distanced. And, you know, by cutting the alcohol sales off at 10, then that, you know, gives you, you know, an hour or two of food and then not continuing to drink. And so to me, that's kind of a compromise. I can't, I can't support shutting them down at 10, but I could alcohol sales at 10.
This is Keisha. I agree with shutting down at 10. School is getting ready to start, and parents are really nervous about sending their children back to school, and I think that we need to try to stay ahead of this. I agree with the mayor that I feel like the next executive order, LeFayette County, is going to be in that list, but if we go ahead and try to stay ahead of it, how we've been successful is go ahead and close it. I mean, you know, to me, nobody really eats after 10 o'clock.
Mayor, Taylor. I support our closing at 10.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion so we can get going on this, that we close the bars and restaurants at 10 o'clock. They don't have to close their...
I'll stick.
Just hang on, President. They can continue to do curbside pickup or delivery. And again, any drive-through restaurants are not under this order.
So, I'm talking...
Closing down, indoor and outdoor dining?
Yeah. Yeah.
So Janice's motion is to close indoor dining? Is that what I just heard Mark say?
And outdoor, indoor and outdoor dining.
Yeah. Okay. To close indoor and outdoor dining at 10 o'clock so that restaurants could continue to do curbside. Does anyone have any questions or remarks? It's all in favor?
Did we get a second?
Preston seconded. Yeah. All right. And y'all have to help me with the votes, since I can't see anybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did say yes.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. So can somebody give me a count on that?
It's four to three. Addie Howell, Antonell, and Taylor voted yes. Yulzie Bailey and Morgan no.
All right. So then it passes. The bars and restaurants will close at 10 o'clock, but they can continue to do curbside after 10 o'clock.
Yes.
All right. Are there other items that you all would like to discuss?
Mayor, and I don't have any specific recommendation on this, but I would like us to talk about and think about gyms. That's the other area where there seems to be quite a bit of a spread of the virus. I don't know what, I don't know how much the gyms are being used now. I know there are some small facilities that I can't imagine even having five people in them would be safe. But what do you all think?
I will tell you that when we started talking about going back to phase one, and we were talking about, and I was looking back at different categories, and I thought, I need to go to a gym, I don't go to a gym frequently, so I can't tell you from personal experience, but I have looked at social media where people have been posting quite a few pictures from inside their gym, and none of the pictures that I have seen are overcrowded. They, you know, I can't, I can't say I've been in the gym, but a lot of the pictures and posts and things that I have seen don't appear that they are anywhere close to even the capacity that we allow. But I could be talked into feeling differently if someone there has, you know, has had a different experience.
I know that measures have been taken at certain gyms where they're taking temperatures as the patrons come in to a certain, if they have a certain temperature that they have to leave the premises. I think that gyms have taken a pretty good amount of steps to protect themselves and protect the patrons. And, you know, the one thing is going back and either closing and reopening and closing really, it's a hard thing for these gyms. You know, the one thing that we need to remember is that when all this first started, there's a lot of money available through the federal government, which with PPP, and that money is, is out now. So, you know, we need to be careful about those things, closing these things, because they're net, their safety fall is not there anymore. So I think if we want to look at doing stuff, we ought to come up with some additional safety measures for them where they continue, can continue to be open. Whether it is, I know some gyms have taken it upon themselves to require the temperature check at the front door in certain, I think we should just do it a different way instead of just, you know, scanning back and shutting them down.
Well, you know, last week, we discussed closing restaurants at 10 and didn't until now we have more information than we did. We have a board meeting next Tuesday night, if, you know, if we want to do some compliance checks and determine if that's needed, if y'all are up for that, I could go the way, but...
But if there's also certain measures that were not in place now that we can implement for them to do, that would help with what we're trying to combat, you know, I think that may be another thing we could look at as well, Mayor.
I think we just need more data. At this point, we don't know. I mean, I'm not going to a gym. I don't know if anybody in here is, but we need to...
I'm certainly not.
I'm not either.
We need to check with some owners, saying, "How busy are you?" I mean, if there's not three or four people, not that big of a deal.
And, you know, if we're going by that same data that we use to close the bars, I would think more people that go to the gyms are not in that data.
That's right. I agree.
Well, we can look at it another time then if we need to.
I think that's a good idea. I was flipping back through the governor's order to see if there were any other, our movie theater has not opened yet, I know they have been addressed, ours has not opened yet, but I know that they are planning to open the bowling alley soon. I'm looking at his order for retail businesses is the only other type of business that he does more stringent requirements for, so no further for entertainment they need doing.
I think the steps that we've taken, when you look at the nationwide data and what other cities and states are doing, I think we've hit the two main areas that we need to with more restrictions.
I think you're right. And I think, like we've all said numerous times before, I believe 99%, maybe 95%, 95% of our businesses are doing everything that they can to follow our guidelines, and many going above and beyond what we're requiring. You know, I don't, I want the public to know that this is not, we're not trying to hammer the businesses. We're trying to, you know, as we said, we believe all businesses can be open at some level if face covering can be worn. And so, you know, hang with us, I know everybody's tired of it. I think that a lot of what we are, what we're seeing is people who are just sick and tired of being sick and tired of COVID-19. So we need to get ahead with it. You're four weeks away from our school district with they had an Oxford opening, and our kids need that.
Can we, I was just trying to ask real quick, did we say what date, when that was starting?
We did not.
We did not. Thank you. We will, will that, should we do that now, folks, or in the resolution?
Resolution.
Okay.
Resolution.
We will have. So let's discuss that. Who would you all like this to take place? You know, what we'll do is make changes in our serving officer safety plan and post it as updated on this date, and that serving officer safety plan will be part of our ninth resolution. Thank you, Mark. So what are you all thinking on the start date?
If you turn to the page, oh, probably the fifth page.
And y'all have to read it, Timmy, I can't be on my agenda on this iPad and on this Microsoft team, so I need you to read it some sleep, hope.
Yeah, Mayor, the changes that we made this morning, I included, just to note, the executive orders has amended up through the most current order, 1507, just because by that order, he extends the deadline as he always does. So we're current through his current order, although we adopt and amend, except, I mean, we adopt, except where we don't, which is to say, we obviously aren't covered by the 12 county requirement, and we know that we have our own plan. Under section two, what it says is, "The city of Oxford adopts all findings and regulations contained in executive orders 1495 through 1507, as amended and extended to become effective at," and that's the question, what time on what day? 8 o'clock tomorrow, 8 o'clock Friday? What's y'all's goal? What are y'all's preference?
I think Friday morning, 8 o'clock.
That sounds good. That sounds good.
Okay, so that would be AM on July 17th, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, um, in the next paragraph, it says all precautions and protective measures outlined in Serving Oxford Safely, a plan for recovery phase one, as amended by Serving Oxford Safely, a plan for recovery phase two, amended, and it'll say, it says July 15. So that's how we incorporate the changes you all just made in your prior motions, because those will be in that plan. And, and what that finishes says, at the time of adoption, it, it should say of this ninth resolution shall be required until further order of the mayor and board of all humans. So though, this ninth resolution will remain in effect until further order, and we got that language in there, two or three resolutions go, because we never knew when the governors might change.
Right.
So I think that covers you until you want to reconsider it any time, and whether it's your next meeting or a special call meeting. And Bart, did you see that little word we need, where we throw that eighth resolution? We need to change that to ninth, section two, second paragraph? We just missed that, so.
I give you a gold star for keeping up with all these things.
Well.
Pope and Bart and Kara have done an amazing job keeping up with all these resolutions.
We think we have, we're not sure we have.
Nobody will know if, if you haven't. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the ninth resolution.
So. All in favor?
To go, oh, okay, to go on that Friday, the 17th at 8:00 AM.
So. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Do you have that vote count, Ashley?
I don't have a count.
All right. Um, again, with nothing else on our agenda, I would ask for a motion to consider an executive session.
May we approve this executive session?
Second.
All right, all in favor? If you oppose, the board will now consider an executive session. Thank you.